Good to see you, everybody. Welcome to the February 21st meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. I'd like to remind everybody, including us, to silence your electronic devices. And if you would, please stand and join the Vice Mayor in the invocation and the pledge.
Dear God, we come before you tonight mindful of our many blessings. We thank you for our families, our friends, and our wonderful community of Temple Terrace. We thank you that we live in a country where we govern ourselves in freedom. We ask you to open our hearts and our minds tonight as we engage in the noble work of public service. Help us advance the common good of all your people by making our city even more amazing for future generations. We ask all of you in this, in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There is one item on the agenda that is going to be pulled. And I just want to mention that in case there's somebody here specifically for that item so that you don't sit through the meeting just to find out it's going to be pulled. And that item is item 8D. That's concerning the resolution approving the execution of the purchase and sale agreement with the Torres Investors Group LLC for the property at 8447 North 56th Street. That item will not be heard tonight. So if you're here for that, I want to make sure you get a chance to leave if that's the only thing you're here for. So next, we have our historical interesting fact concerning the city of Temple Terrace. And this meeting, Councilmember Abel is going to give us our fun fact. She says, we'll wait and see if it's fun, but it's a fact.
That's true. Today's fun fact is more fact and less fun. But as we all know, in 1925, when the city was founded, this was the time of segregation in our country and specifically in the South. And I always wondered what was the role of African Americans in Temple Terrace during that time? And I only got a partial answer to that in a picture, a golfing picture, where there were some caddies who were black. And I wondered how they came to be employed there and what the story was behind that. And for a long time, I didn't get any more information until recently. I learned that there were advertisements for Temple Terrace that featured a perk for the city, which was that people were going to be bussed in, transported into the city from the communities that they lived in, in order to work. And these people had various jobs, mostly domestic work like cooking, cleaning, yard maintenance, golf course maintenance, and of course, also caddying. And this type of practice was not peculiar to Temple Terrace. In fact, I'm sure it happened in other places as well, but it was certainly a selling point in these advertisements in the early years of the community. And I think it's really important that we recognize this and acknowledge the meaningful contributions of these people of color who came into the community and helped make it successful. Because as you know, Temple Terrace with its golf courses and swimming pools and Club Morocco was largely a wealthy community where it was kind of the leisure class that lived here. So in order to support a leisure class, there has to be a working class. And these were the folks who played that role. So that's my interesting fact.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. So the first item of business is a board appointment. The Board of Adjustment has a vacancy for a regular member. There's one vacancy on the BOA for the unexpired term of Marissa Robinson. The city received one application from Tony Anderson, who is currently an alternate member. She has experience in construction as a construction project manager and in real estate as she's a licensed mortgage broker. Councilmembers, I'm assuming you've had an opportunity to review the application from Ms. Anderson. Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
I'd move to approve the appointment.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Ms. Anderson is appointed as a regular member of the Board of Adjustment for a term extending from February 21st, 2023, until August 16th, 2024. Next item is approval of the minutes from February 7th. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes of our last council meeting? And if so, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the nay sign. The minutes are adopted. Next, are persons wishing to address the council on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda? We do have a three-minute time limit imposed on all comments from members of the public. We ask that speakers approach the podium and state their name and city of residence. And we like to assure everybody that your concerns are followed up on by your elected officials, the city manager and staff are in attendance. So I currently have one request to address the council from Mr. John Kennedy. If anybody else would like to address the council, the forms are in the back of the room and you submit them to the city clerk and we'll call you next. Welcome, Mr. Kennedy.
Thanks, sir. Now, I'm going to keep it short because I've already basically talked to all of you. What I want to address is my reputation in Temple Terrace. I've been a proud member of Temple Terrace for 25 years. I've had conflicts with several individuals. And I have a reputation that precedes me. Code enforcement Lori Smith came out and she was told before she came to my house, be careful for Mr. Kennedy, he's a bad dude. Do I look like a bad dude? Yeah, I can be very physically intimidating. But personally, I'm a nurse. I take care of premature babies, neonatal intensive care, pediatric cardiac intensive care, and anything and all in between. I want to lay a lie, everybody's fears, that I'm going to hurt them. I don't hurt anybody unless I get pushed into a corner. I will protect each and every one of you, anybody on the street, any police officer. I will back them up in circumstances until they get reinforcements. If you gave you, if I gave you my cards, you have access to me 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So basically, that's, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that I'm really a nice guy. I look very intimidating. I was a professional, almost semi-professional bodybuilder when I was young. And now I'm a decrepit old man. I'm only 69 and I can barely walk. So, but anyway, I just want to come say hi and tell every one of you, I love you all, my sister, my brother, my sister, my brother, my brother, my sister, my sister, and everybody else. God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Ryan Young.
Good evening, sir. Counsel, I'm here. My name is Ryan Young, of St. Augustine. I'm here about the project water management. This started all back in basically the first week of February. We had some individuals showed up at our home, basically unannounced. We had no idea what was going on. They proceeded to give us some paperwork, you know, very vague paperwork, pretty much, you know, hey, here, sign this, we want to come onto your property. After doing some research, could finally came to the conclusion that, you know, there was going to be a water management product, a project that was going to move our water mains from the rear of the property to the front of the property. Okay? So with that being said, my concerns are who's going to be liable? Okay? If in the event that there is a break in the pipe, okay? Because I've had that happen before. I incurred a $1,400 bill. I proved to the city that there was no leaks or anything like that and that the bill was, the meter was just actually read wrong and I was given no leeway. Okay? So I'm very concerned about that. Two, I'm very concerned about the fact of is that who's going to be responsible? Granted, I understand this company, McBurney, Harrison McBurney, is licensed and bonded. But who are they, I mean, are they going to be, you know, somebody falls and gets hurt on my property? Am I, my other one's going to be getting sued? And, you know, at that moment in time, I could be, you know? So I went down, I spoke to Public Utilities, three days after, finally get a letter in the mail. Okay? Now, from what I understand is, is that this was closed in May of 2022. Okay? And so I feel like that if I would have went down and possibly started raising concern, would we have ever have received these notices stating that, hey, there is something going on? You're going to have, you know, guests showing up to your house that you have no idea? That, you know, my wife is there at home with my three-year-old, okay? And we have no idea who these guys are. You know, they just walk up to the house and who knows who they are. So, and, you know, by Florida State statute, let me pull this up real quick. Florida State Statute 71313, Notice of Commencement, quote me if I'm wrong. You know, there is by law, this states that you have to, you know, give proper notice to a resident. And at the end of the day, we are residents of Temple Terrace. I've been a resident of Temple Terrace since 1993, okay? And I feel like that, that, you know, this violates the code of ethics, which, you know, which is the Florida Commission on Code of Ethics, you know, to notify and to let us know as citizens what's going on on our property. And so I am requesting a copy or a letter notarized by the city, because the city is the one that's going to be heading this up, that I'm going to be non-liable for any type of damages this done and any type of, you know, is anybody getting hurt on my property so that I won't be sued for that? So that's what I'm here for today.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Greg, is it Tops? Tope?
I could address Mr. Young's concern if you'd want to do that until the next gentleman speaks or...
Well, I think we're going to be hearing the same topic. So how about I let you address that after? Mr. Tope?
I'm also in St. Augustine, longtime resident. My question is, who is responsible for the quality of the water? It's not us. And from what Ryan told me, as far as him talking to one of the city representatives, like, I have a backflow preventer. I put in the whole sprinkler system myself, dug it up 28 years ago. I'm not as young and spry as I used to be. And I'd rather spend my money on my grandchildren and a little bit of traveling. I just retired last year. So I don't want to have to go in and dig up a bunch of pipes. I've got sprinklers and water mains that I put in myself. I've got electrical conduit, there's stuff, FiOS, there's stuff all over that yard. And if they're moving it from the, from the back to the front, it's going to tear everything to pieces. So when they came out to the house, I, when Harris McBurney showed up, I asked them very specific and extensive questions on what they were going to do and what they were responsible for. Well, they gave me a song and dance that you guys are not backing up at all. So who's going to hold their feet to the fire if they rip my yard up? And for instance, the backflow preventer, that was put in by code. Okay? I had to have a permit and I had to have an inspection. That was not me, that was you guys. And you're saying that you're not going to replace it? And it's not going to be put back? So I'm trying to figure out what's going on. I don't want to be responsible for a bunch of damage that I am, that I'm going to have to incur and take care of. The other thing is, I, I don't understand as well why we weren't notified. Like, a guy shows up and say, we're going to move your water main and there was no notification from the city at all. And that's disturbing. I, and Ryan called down to the, to the water department. They didn't even know what was going on. They didn't even know anything about this project. So that doesn't exactly instill a great sense of confidence as to the right hand knowing what the left hand's doing. So all I'm saying is, I would appreciate it if you guys would have your finger on the pulse of this project and back your, your people on this. I mean, we pay your, well, I know you're not paid, but, but, you know, you're responsible to us. I appreciate your service, by the way. But I just don't want to, I don't want this thing to be, you know, get out of hand and, and, and being occurring a bunch of costs that I really don't want to pay for. Do you understand what I'm saying? Okay, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Tope. So I do think we have some answers for both of you that might be helpful. I know the city manager and I have talked. So, Mr. Baye, if you want to speak to this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have spoken with Mr. Young last week and I want to thank both gentlemen for bringing this to the dais this evening. So the direction that we've taken is we've told the contractor to put the project on pause. Contractor got ahead of us, very candidly, pretty ambitious. They, they wanted to get started, but we, all the ducks were not in a row. So we've told them we're going to stop. We are planning to have a public informational meeting the week of March 6th. We haven't set the date just yet, but the date will be set shortly. And letters will go out to every single property that's going to be impacted by this project, inviting anyone from the public to attend. At that meeting, what I anticipate, what I have expected from my career is when we have these meetings, we have the contractor, we have the project management team from the city, we have project engineers there and available to answer your questions, those specific questions the gentleman had. For example, like, hey, in my yard, I've got the backflow preventer, I've got my irrigation system, et cetera. If they can't answer your question that evening, my expectation, and the one I'm going to tell my utilities director is going to be, the contractor has to get back with you to go to your property and make sure that they identify all those issues. We're also going to address the issue of the liability and getting you something that will give you some peace of mind in terms of documentation, because I know that I would have the same concerns. Like, I live in the community as well. If somebody was digging up my yard, I'd want to know what's going on. I'd want to also know more or less, like, when are you going to get to my property? How long are you going to be in my property and things like that? I think those are all very fair and reasonable expectations. And that's the type of project that we should be doing in this community. So that's our plan going forward. I encourage you, if you don't get the right answers, to call me directly. Obviously, I should call Troy Tinch first, our utilities director. But if for some reason you still aren't satisfied, you could always call my office. And we hope to move forward from this. And I apologize personally for the fact that this was disconcerting for folks. It's not the way we'd want to start the project. But I hope you can give us some time and some patience and we'll move forward to make this as, as palatable as possible. It's still a construction project. So I don't want to mislead folks. It's construction, construction is impactful, but we'll, we'll want to do it to the best that possibly we can so that you're not as, as impacted as, as, to any negative extent.
I just, I do want to thank Mr. Tinch and you sort of, you know, for actually calling me back and actually speaking to me and telling me, you know, kind of letting me know what's going on. I really do appreciate that, you know? So, well, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, gentlemen. And we will work through these problems, as the city manager said. And so apologize for the stress this has caused you. It was certainly not anybody's intent to do that. But are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay. If not, our next item is a resolution approving the Tampa Electric Drive Smart Program site host agreement. And our business relations manager, Greg Polly, is here to explain.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on this again this evening. As you know, this project has been going on for a bit now and it's grown legs and it's come to you tonight in the form of an agreement with, starting off with TECO. There will be a subsequent agreement that I'll explain in just a moment. But the agreement that we're going to talk about here tonight is with the Tampa Electric Company in support of the Drive Smart Pilot Program. First, a quick background on how we got to where we are now. In September of 2021, we applied for the Drive Smart Pilot Program through TECO to bring electric vehicle chargers to Temple Terrace. In May of 2022, some of you may recall, Mr. Kenneth Hernandez came before you here in this council chambers to announce that the city had received the award of a location to be placed in our redevelopment area. The location is approved to support both Level 3 DC Fast chargers and also Level 2, the more traditional chargers. At this time, we are proposing a combination of at least two of each. There is a possibility that we may be able to put a third port, depending on the final design of the site. And we are going to accommodate ADA access. So depending on how that looks, we may or may not be able to add that third traditional charger for a total of five chargers. But right now, we're definitely solid on two and two, two fast chargers and two traditional chargers. Under the pilot program, Tampa Electric Company will retain ownership of the equipment. The city will agree to share the usage data with Tampa Electric Company so that they can perform the necessary program analysis. The city will maintain a service account to provide electrical, electricity to the chargers. The user experience will be maintained by a third-party provider. This is that other agreement that is subsequent and pending that you, will be coming before you in, in a few weeks, once we get further along in the process. It's a, it's a company that provides the user experience, allows the folks to use their smart devices, log into the app, pay for their session, and log their data through their smart device. And again, that is a different company. You have a sample agreement from that company in your packet, but you will be seeing a more, an actual permanent agreement coming to you in the future. The, the last bullet point on that slide is the pilot is scheduled to expire in May of 2025, at which time, at TECO's discretion, they can release the property, the equipment to us, turn title over to us, to the city. Here's a aerial map view of the site. The bottom right call-out photo there shows you what the condition of the site is now. And if you can just imagine looking at that photo, seeing the transformer and the main components to the right in that little island bulbout, and then those sites being converted into spaces to host two fast chargers to the right and at least two traditional chargers to the left. The entire agreement has been provided in your packet this evening. The agreement was hammered out over the last several months. Our legal team worked on it and TECO's legal team worked on it and they've now have come to an agreement that both parties are happy with. And at this time, staff recommends that the city adopt a resolution approving the agreement. And I'd like to introduce to you also, Mr. Daryl Leslie from TECO. He is going to be the project manager and he's also available to respond to any questions on behalf of TECO. And with that, I will stand for any questions you have for either myself or Mr. Leslie.
Good, thank you, Mr. Polly, and welcome, Mr. Leslie. Councilmember's questions? Councilmember Abel?
Thank you for your presentation and also for all the staff and you for getting it going and making this happen. My question is though, so when the title is turned over, and I think you said 2025, is there any anticipated cost for the city at that point?
Thank you. The current agreement is a $1 transfer. However, we would, as a city, at that point moving forward, be responsible to maintain any failures in the equipment. During the pilot program, TECO does all the heavy lifting. We provide, we maintain an account that provides electric service to the devices. The Nova Charge Company takes care of the user experience. They collect from the users and then they then remit payment back to us. Once the pilot expires, we will, at that point, be responsible for any equipment failure and we will also be responsible for maintaining that Nova Charge agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, Councilmember Chambers? Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Chambers?
So the city will maintain an account, so we would pay TECO for the electricity used. And then the users of the service would pay Nova Charge and they would pay us for that amount. And hopefully, we make more money than it cost us on the electricity.
That is certainly the plan.
Right, okay. And the, back to the maintenance. So in my experience in previous, the chargers kind of last three to four years. And so we'll be getting a charging system that's a couple of years old. And then it may be even outdated by 2025 with some of the new chargers. So I'm a little concerned about that, picking up something that's going to cost us thousands of dollars to replace chargers. Just a little concern. I'm not going to stop anything tonight, but that's just a concern I have.
Well, I understand your concern and maybe Mr. Leslie can speak to the equipment that they're working with today. He did mention to me earlier that there is a, I'll call it a comparison location that's been recently installed on the campus of the University of South Florida that is going to be very similar or is similar to what they would be building here in Temple Terrace. Not exactly the same, but I'll let him speak on the equipment and that comparison site as well.
Well, thank you. The installation we just finished at USF is at the new building, just past the main entrance on the right-hand side, right up against Fowler. It is four chargers at that location. Their consideration did include ADA. So there were some flexing that we had to do with some of the parking spacing. But we've got some, some other considerations we can look at if we consider ADA for this location as well. The signage is there, the chargers are there as well. So you can get a good representation at that location if you wanted to stop by. In regards to your question on the duration, kind of the lifespan of those chargers, it's my understanding that the chargers are about a seven and a half, eight-year period typically. But I think that's also the newer models. I think the, the standard now that they're coming out with has got a newer technology. But I, I will recognize that technology is changing daily with EV charging. So new things are coming out. But I think you're equipped with also the DC Fast. The DC Fast chargers that we are planning on putting in are, is 100 KW DC Fast, which is one car can get 100% of that 100 KW. Or if two vehicles pull up to use the DC Fast, then that's 50 KW each, they split the load. So you're going to have the more up-to-date on the DC Fast. The Level 2 chargers are pretty much standard today.
Would they be able to charge all types of vehicles, Tesla and Nissan and all of them, or proprietary?
No, the, for the most part, there is a couple of charger plugs that are out there. Tesla's got a unique one for them. But with the charge, the unit that we're planning on installing, it's pretty much universal throughout most of the vehicles except for Tesla. Tesla buy, you have to buy an adapter to use these chargers.
Okay, thank you.
And most of the time, Tesla users have that adapter in their vehicle.
And I'm sure will be on the national website. So if you're driving, your car recognizes where a charging station is?
Absolutely. Most of the apps, matter of fact, in like Tesla, they'll say, yeah, I want to charge. Where's the closest location? And the vehicle will tell you the closest location.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I have a couple of questions. Is this, this charging restricted to automotive vehicles? And is it possible that a golf cart could use this charging station?
A great question. I, I don't know if the golf carts having these type of plugs right now. The golf carts are pretty much a 120-volt plug-in, if I, if I'm correct. I haven't, I don't have an electric golf cart, but I believe they're a 120 plug-in. So they're different.
Okay, and then in terms... And then, in terms of the size and the space that, that this will take, obviously, we're looking to develop the property that's on the other side of those parking spaces. Does this in any way impact that, you know, take away any of the space or impact the future development?
That's a great question. That space that we're talking about is 8901 North 56th Street. That's currently listed by the city for sale, and it's being managed through our broker. It is a series of 13 very narrow parcels that make up the full one point, basically one and three-quarters of an acre. The southernmost piece of that is already, if you, if you'll consider it, cut off from the main parcel. And that's where all the parking currently sits. So we're not going to be encroaching on the existing parcel that we're selling, but we will provide TECO with a utility easement that will allow them to bring power from the roadway, the highway, down the utility easement, across that southernmost sliver, if you will, because they're very narrow parcels, bring it across that southernmost piece down to where I showed you earlier with the pictures. It will not encroach upon the parcel that's being sold for development at all.
What kind of infrastructure would be required, though, to bring that much energy into the space?
That's totally you. Come on. The, actually Tampa Electric, along 56th Street, has a switchgear, okay? It's kind of like a distribution box for our primary facilities. What we're planning on doing is actually, and I think there's a conduit that's already stubbed out onto the property, so we'll be able to utilize that piece to bring primary cable over to a transformer. I believe you mentioned in the presentation, that grass area, we'll plan on putting in a transformer there. Behind that, we will put in the infrastructure, standard electrical infrastructure to serve the chargers. So we're trying to tuck it into a corner that, so, one of the reasons for that future development, so that it won't interfere with that as well.
And all that service is underground?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions, actually for each of you. So the easy, what I think is the easy one first is, I have not seen the concepts from Kimley Horn about the pedestrian master plan. Does, does, this doesn't look like it would be getting in the way of that. It doesn't? Okay, good. Okay. The second question is, again, it has to do with what the vice mayor was bringing up about the retirement of these in '25. So does Nova Charge, who's the in-between vendor that collects the revenue from the user and provides us with quarterly payments, do they, do they have relationships with entities, host sites, after the TECO pilot program runs out? Is that part of their business model? In other words, do they have agreements with other host sites beyond this pilot program? So what I'm getting at is '25 comes around, which will be here before we know it, and everything's going wonderful, the chargers have been great, and we obtain them, TECO decides to turn the ownership over to us. Does Nova Charge walk away, or do we have the ability to continue a relationship with them? Because...
Yeah, you've got a couple of options there. First, and one of the questions that you kind of mentioned, is the relationship at the end of 2025. There's potential that Tampa Electric may have a different program at that time, and we extend it. So we do have that ability to potentially take a look at extending the program and taking on those responsibilities so that you don't have to. The second part of it, as far as Nova Charge, that you will continuously, if you want to have the chargers set up so that people reimburse you for payment, you'll need that relationship with Nova Charge, okay? Because they're going to reimburse you for all of the usage. So that, that relationship will continue on.
Okay. Because what we wouldn't want is, 2025 comes along, TECO makes a business decision and says, you know, well, we haven't gotten the use out of them or whatever, we're going to, you know, just give that to the city. And then Nova Charge says, well, we don't have relationships outside of the TECO, you know, so you guys are on your own, we don't have the ability to... And now we have chargers there that don't work. I mean, that we wouldn't, that's worse than not having them.
Just, if I may.
Yeah.
I did have, I had a telephone conference with the Nova Charge Regional Supervisor, as well as our local representative. We've actually met with the local representative onsite. We've walked the entire site several times. So we've already started that relationship and that connection. This is what they do as a company. This is not the only thing they do as a company. They are in business to maintain these and move forward. There is a subscriber fee. I don't have that number off the top of my head right now, but I think it's, they gave it to me on the phone, that we would, that we would then assume at, you know, after the pilot expires. Please, please don't interpret that as the equipment is to expire, it's just the pilot program. And as Darryl mentioned, I'm sorry, Mr. Leslie mentioned, there is a clause to allow them to extend that and move forward. Because there's two things I, I want to share with you that are in play right now. The pilot program is, is positioned in a way to allow energy providers to understand and analyze consumer usage and how best to serve the owners of these types of vehicles. Because as we all know, they're growing in popularity. And the other side of that is, the, the agreement is also set up through the agreement that's before you tonight, in connection with the Nova Charge agreement, that it's not, it's not meant as a profit-making program at this point. It's, it's meant to charge a fair fee for the service. I ask, I asked the folks I was speaking with from Nova Charge, you know, what is the, what's the average consumer going to spend when they pull up to one of these things? And they're going to spend anywhere from $5 to $10. That's it. So the $10 is going to be the high-end on the DC Fast chargers, but they're only going to be there half as long. The DC Fast chargers literally are going to be able to charge a vehicle in half the amount of time. So again, this is not, it, it's geared for information gathering and allowing the energy service providers to learn more about consumer habits and understand how these programs best serve our communities. And the other side of it is, is we really are entering into an agreement, into a pilot program, that is meant to provide a very good service at a very fair rate.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Is there a motion, Council?
I move to approve the resolution approving the Tampa Electric Drive Smart Program Site Host Agreement.
Second. Motion second, discussion on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Resolution is adopted. Thank you both.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I, I would like to point out real briefly that this item began a couple of years ago at a goal-setting session, and I don't remember who brought it up first, but I do remember there were two people that brought it up.
She brought it up.
Councilmember Abel brought it up, and I think Vice Mayor Chambers also brought it up. So this, this begin with both of you, so thank you very much. Next is a resolution approving inter-local agreement with Hillsborough County for EMS Supplies. Assistant Fire Chief Shane Salmon is here to explain. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Shane Salmon, your Assistant Fire Chief, and I'm here to present the resolution that you have before you. The resolution would approve an agreement with Hillsborough County, and, I'm sorry, resolution that you would have before you would approve an agreement with Hillsborough County and allow for distribution of grant funding to be allocated for EMS supplies. This is a Florida Department of Health, of Health grant that is distributed to Hillsborough County and then reallocated to local municipalities. Our portion of the grant funding would be $8,220 and must be utilized to improve or expand pre-hospital emergency services. In addition, the resolution indicates the equipment that will be purchased with this funding, which has also been approved by the state of Florida. And so it is staff's recommendation that you adopt this resolution approving the inter-local agreement between Hillsborough County and the City of Temple Terrace for the amount of $8,220. That concludes my presentation, and I will stand for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Chief. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Councilmembers, are there any questions?
I do have one.
Vice Mayor Chambers?
One of your items is a child heart and lung trainer.
Yes.
So, and is that used by just your staff to practice, or is that going to be taught to the public or some of the old classes you used to have?
No. These will be items that our own firefighters will use to enhance their own knowledge and skill base so that they can provide services to the community.
Thank you.
Other questions? There are no questions. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the resolution with Hillsborough County for EMS Supplies.
Second.
Motion second, discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Chief. Next is a resolution approving budget adjustments to fiscal year 2023 budget. Finance Director Jim Ingram is here to explain. Welcome, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. At the conclusion of fiscal year 2021-22, there were several purchase orders that were not completed by September 30th, 2022. Because the expenditures did not take place in fiscal year 2022, there is fund balance to continue these necessary commitments in fiscal year 2023. The items and projects on these purchase orders were approved and appropriated in fiscal year 2022. The Exhibit 1 attachment that you have details the purchase order numbers, vendor, GL account, item or project description, amount, balance for budget adjustment, current completion status, and the appropriated fund balance accounts to adjust in order to provide funds and balance the budget for this year. The aggregate totals for each affected fund are as follows. General Fund, $350,000 in N81. Street Improvement Fund, $978,520. Community Investment Fund, $113,009. Water and Sewer Utility Fund, $449,187. And Water and Sewer Renewal and Replacement Fund, $570,149. It is staff's recommendation that City Council adopt a resolution approving the attached Exhibit 1 adjustments to the City of Temple Terrace fiscal year 2022-23 annual budget. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to address the council? Seeing none, councilmembers, do you have any questions for Councilmember Fernandez?
It's not really a question. I just want to confirm that these expenditures were part of the prior year's budget, but they, due to timing, were not actually expended during the prior year budget period.
That's correct. They are, in, in the case of some projects, they may not have been completed, may be partially paid based on what was completed during fiscal year '22, and we still have a balance to complete.
So these funds were essentially set aside in the restricted funds in order to be allocated to the expenditures that were hopefully going to be completed this year?
Yes. As a matter of fact, if, within the, the GL account, if there were funds not available at the end of the year, they would not be approved or moved to, to be on this budget adjustment list. There were actually less than 10 POs that were, did not make this list, that were not approved because there, that account line that was being spent out was maxed out. They were all small amounts, under $10,000. But we don't put any budget adjustments moving it into the next year unless there's the savings from it not being spent on that line item in the previous fiscal year.
That's it.
Other questions, councilmembers? Thank you. Mr. Ingram, is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution, a resolution approving the attached Exhibit 1 adjustments to the City of Temple Terrace budget year 2022 to 2023.
Motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, naysign, resolution is adopted. Next item is being pulled. This is a resolution approving the execution of the purchase and sale agreement with Taurus Investors Group LLC regarding the property at 8447 North 56th Street. This item is being pulled from the agenda. City Manager, would you like to recap? I know you did at the last meeting, but not everybody might have been watching the last meeting.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of council and public. So this project, we were, we're, candidly, we were all excited about this project. Unfortunately, yesterday afternoon, the developer advised the city that they needed to withdraw. Shouldn't come as a surprise, but construction costs have inflated a number of projects across the country, probably around the world, and this one was no exception. The, the project was at least $10 million over budget, what they anticipated in order to at least break even. The reality was they couldn't continue in that, in that marketplace with that, with that type of cost. In terms of financing, the financing markets are pretty tight right now when it comes to hotels. We all know what happened the last several years with COVID and pandemic, and how that affected the hotel industry, so the finance markets are, they, they really look with a, sort of a microscope on these things, and they were having trouble making all the math work. As a result, they've pulled out. The, as I mentioned at the CRA meeting, the developer is very apologetic, loves Temple Terrace, would like to do other projects in our community if the opportunity arises. And we will continue to market this property. We have our Realtor looking at it very closely, and we actually have two leads that, hopefully will, one of those leads will come to fruition, and we can bring you something in the next several months.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item is a second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1544, amending Section 14-72 of the Code relating to the local business tax. Open the public hearing. Finance Director Jim Ingram is here to explain.
Over the last second, several months, city staff and the consulting firm of Kimley Horn worked to establish an appropriate annual business tax for the Amazon Fulfillment Center. The consultant reviewed tax rate structures from communities across the state, and particularly in our area, Lakeland, Plant City, Tampa. They, they reviewed especially those that are in close proximity. The original intent was to place Amazon in a warehouse category. In the process of doing research on this issue, it was discovered that the city's business tax ordinance, last revised on 8/21/2012, does not in fact include a warehouse category, although the city's financial software, Navaline, does have this category. The inconsistency appears to have led to eight Temple Terrace businesses being categorized as warehouse for the purpose of business tax collection. To correct this, staff is recommending that council adopt or amend the ordinance to establish a category of warehouse, distribution center, and storage. Seven of the eight businesses previously labeled as warehouse would be included in this new category. The eighth will be more appropriately categorized as moving transportation. Staff is proposing that the square footage rate for the warehouse, distribution center, and storage category be set at .005, or half a cent per square foot, plus the $520.92 that... plus the $520.92 base fee. The fees for the two other existing categories with square footage will remain unchanged. Staff is recommending that City Council adopt Ordinance 1544 on this second reading. And also wanted to add a couple of things. Some questions had come up at the last council meeting. Councilmember Fernandez had asked about the medical park or facility over on Telecom Parkway. It's actually at 7802 East Telecom Parkway. That is owned by Bay Care Health, which is a nonprofit and does not pay business tax receipt due to its nonprofit status. We had mentioned, I just want to make it clear too, that we are planning to do a full audit of our business tax receipts. By the way, there are, in our ordinance, not sure how warehouse got missed 10 years ago, but there is 359 categories existing, some of them which are quite humorous because I don't think we have any businesses that fall under them. But we will go through. We want to make a thorough check to review our existing businesses and make sure everyone is categorized properly, paying the fair amount. This will take several months. It's a big undertaking, but we've identified this is an important project for the city. And I'm not sure if anyone asked us, but I had written it down last time as a note. We collected $322,000 in business tax receipts within the city in fiscal year 2022. I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to address this item? Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Fernandez.
I just, I want to ask a little bit about the strategy that was used when determining the tax category and the tax rate. And I don't expect the City of Temple Terrace to be exactly like every jurisdiction around them, but I also don't want us to price ourselves out of the business development where, you know, we're close enough so that if somebody likes the area and we are too expensive to open, they might choose to go next door into a different jurisdiction. So I just want to make sure that as part of the strategy, we're also considering being a competitive marketplace.
That was, we had, we met a team from, not just the finance department, but legal, business relations. We talked extensively about issues like that, even to the point of, should we even have a charge for? There are some categories that charge by number of employees, which I'm not sure that's the best if you want to facilitate people coming in and hiring. So there are a lot of different, the structures, there's a lot of different ways, and this is pretty uniform across other municipalities where certain categories lends itself to square footage, charging by square foot, and so forth. We did, as a part of the strategizing, we did look, what are we charging based or compared to what some of the other cities around us are charging? To be fair and honest, we are a little on the high side. We did not want to bring Amazon in, up the ante, so to speak. We wanted to make sure that Amazon was also treated fairly and that the existing businesses were treated fairly. So we are slightly above, and I think this is something that, you know, we may continue to look at. It's a very, very good, valid question. We don't, we do recognize we don't want to inhibit business development.
Councilmembers, other questions? Very good. If none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Section 14-72 of the City of Temple Terrace Code of Ordinances relating to schedule of local business taxes to be paid, tax levied payment required and amount to be paid, providing for applicability and severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Ordinance 1544 upon second reading.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. I do have one comment I want to make. While it may be true that we are slightly above on the business tax, I want everybody to also remember that we're also slightly below on the ad valorem rate. This is not their property taxes. This is their business tax. So we are very competitive with our ad valorem property tax rate, which is a much larger figure to what businesses are paying in taxes. That's a much larger number. So they may pay $300 more or something for their business license, but they're paying $3,000 less on their property tax. I'm making numbers up, but the point is, the overall tax burden here is very competitive. All right. Any other comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays. Ordinance is adopted on second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Is there any carryover council business from previous meetings?
I have new.
Sorry?
New.
Okay, well, that's next. So we have new business and board reports. Councilmember Fernandez.
So I have a couple of different things. First, I went to the boundary hearing for the school district at King High School last night, and the superintendent reiterated that he is promoting boundary change option four, which I know they discussed today, and that would have a lesser impact on city residents. They did look, and for random city addresses, they didn't see any change in schools that they are assigned to. However, we should expect to get more Jennings students as they repurpose that school, which will increase the usage at Greco. However, this is going to be a phased approach, so it won't be next year that every student is immediately relocated to a school and a school is repurposed. I'm not exactly sure how a phased approach will work or look, but it is anticipated after the first year to save the district $14 million a year in their general fund expenses for transportation and other expenses running underutilized school properties. So I guess we'll see how it all comes to pass, but this, Temple Terrace residents can expect to still be assigned to King High School for high school, Greco Middle School for middle school, and split between Temple Terrace Elementary and Lewis, and maybe some, a small number will go to PISO. So we'll have our same boundaries, basically. Another thing I want to, then this is just for your information. The March 17th Bike With the Mayor Day is, it is the Friday that's during spring break. So I don't know what the attendance might be with, you know, younger people, but just so you know that. And then we were discussing this the other day, after the, as we were talking about the Temple Terrace facts and history. And now would be the perfect time to actually come up with some projects that USF students might be able to do because a professor has to have time to pull the project together. These wouldn't necessarily be class assignments. These would be projects that USF students might want to work on for independent research credit. And now's the time because the professors can get something that is a more organized structure and advertise it to the students, and they would have time to get that put together in time for the fall semester. So I've just, this is just a thought. There are a lot of people that, right now, that have lived in this city a long, a long time, and it would be nice to get some of their stories committed to some sort of video or written, I mean, video is probably better, but, you know, something to just ask some people that have lived here a long time what their memories are of living here and growing up here and raising a family here, or whatever their experience was. And that could be a project that might be workable with a USF student or, you know, an intern. Or it could be workable with somebody in the city who wants to volunteer and do that. But it's just my thought that if we would like to incorporate more cohesion with USF and create more projects and interaction, this would be a good way to do it, and now would be the time to organize that.
So you're volunteering to do that?
I'm volunteering to work with someone who's more, slightly more knowledgeable to come up with practical projects.
Who would that be?
Well, I mean, we do have a new employee who is, was recently involved in historic preservation on a more volunteer basis that might be very knowledgeable about what we could do. I don't necessarily have a specific project in mind besides trying to capture maybe some of the memories of people that have lived here for a long time.
Well, no, the Centennial Committee is already working to capture some of those oral histories. But if you want to start a new relationship or a new proposal with USF, somebody's got to do that. And I'm a little fool. And I think Ms. Robinson is a little fool in community development too. So I don't know if the Centennial Committee might want to... I mean, we talk all the time about USF, and I'll tell you, the city manager and I are tangled up in USF. Like, you know, everybody says, oh, we got to establish a relationship with USF. Oh, my gosh, I'm there six times a month already, so.
Well, I don't have any issue talking to people at USF. But what I would like is maybe some guidance from people as to, like, what kind of project would we be interested? You know, do we want somebody who's going to build cases where we can put them in the library and showcase things? Do we want somebody that's going to do something to create a QR code with a walking tour of historic homes, which there is something kind of like that that exists? Or do, you know, do we want somebody to create a physical, you know, signs identifying certain things in the city? I don't really know, I don't necessarily have an idea of what a specific project could be that we could find some, a student that might be interested in doing this. But I'm happy to talk to USF professors about it.
Okay. Okay. Well, let us know how we can support that. I know the Centennial Committee is already talking about some of these same things. So I'll let you get with the city manager, or the chair of the Centennial Committee is Sharon Gaskin, and maybe she can make sure that you're, you know, everybody's kind of pulling in the same direction there. But yeah, it's great. I mean, we can't, sure.
That's it for me.
Other new business or board reports?
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
And I could have brought it up during the charging station talk, but a question to staff. The charging station that was out here, I know the equipment is still there. Is the service still active, and are we paying for that still per month?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Langfield.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The, I am fairly well-versed in the history of the charging station out at the site at Park and Ride. It was installed in about 2005, James, correct me if I'm wrong, 2008, somewhere in that neighborhood, through a grant with Nissan and TECO again?
TECO.
Kind of question, yeah. And it was managed, in a lot of what I was listening to, with the charging stations that are being proposed for the redevelopment area in much the same way, where the city was responsible to provide electric service to that unit. And then there was a third-party management company that processed the payments that came in from owners of electric vehicles that used it, and then a fee was paid back to the city for the use of the charger. The charger at that location was not used to its full potential. And I think a lot of that had to do with location. It was not a good location for the charger. There were, because I would get a report every month from the monitoring firm that paid us the money about who was using it and when. There were between one and three individual people that used that charger on a regular basis who lived in the area. The amount of money that that charging station generated through its usage was never enough money to cover what we needed to pay TECO on a monthly basis to maintain the meter and pay for the electric that was out there. But that was a much different time than we're in now with regards to the popularity of electric vehicles. That may be very different. What ultimately caused the demise of that vehicle was the changing in technologies. The technologies that that particular charging station used to communicate with that third party became obsolete. And it could have kept functioning. And again, James had mentioned that the lifespan of these things, the city was incurring some fairly significant maintenance costs to keep that up and running. And what ultimately was going to happen was the charging station, we had two options with the charging station. We could turn it off, or we could operate it as a, it's free, because there was no longer an avenue for a firm to collect the monies generated from use of that charging station. Conversations with previous city managers about what it was costing us to provide the electricity, what it was costing us to keep that charging station up and running, and then ultimately, our inability to charge people to use it is what led to its decommissioning, I guess is the best term for what happened to that charging station. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
It didn't. That was a great presentation.
Okay. What was your question?
Is the power pole still there, and is TECO charging us money per month?
The power pole is still there. The meter, I do not believe, is active anymore.
Okay, because it was, our minimum charge was $35 a month.
It was something along those numbers. So I apologize for much more than you wanted to hear.
During all this, I was just curious if it was still there and we're paying for a station that doesn't work.
The pole is still there. I do not believe the meter is active.
Could somebody check to see if we're not paying $35 a month on something that doesn't work?
I'm pretty sure it's been.
I don't think we are. I remember this from a few years ago.
That's all. I'm sorry to, but it was a great history of that station.
You're going to do the fun fact next time. Other new business or board reports? I have a couple of quick things. So some of you may already know this from watching the news, but the Transportation Planning Organization's Executive Director, Beth Alden, has announced her retirement in November. And so I have now been tasked with being involved in the selection of a new executive director because I'm chairman of the Policy Committee at the TPO. And so we will be proposing to the overall TPO the methodology of how to go about recruiting and soliciting resumes and who's going to have the interview process and the hiring process. So we'll present that to the overall TPO on March 8th with a target date of having that person hired and onboard by mid-October. Two other quick things. One is periodically, the county is tasked with doing an assessment of... One is periodically, the county is tasked with doing an assessment of the county, to include the three cities, about our efforts at natural disaster mitigation and resiliency, what kind of outreach we do, those kinds of things. The county includes the cities, they facilitate this, the county then reports that data up to the state, who compiles it for the 67 counties, and ultimately, it's filtered up to FEMA. The score that each community has given is instrumental in establishing insurance rates for the city, so it's a very important process that we want to be deeply involved in. And so the Temple Terrace representatives, it's a combination of staff and then either a citizen volunteer or a council member. And so Councilmember Fernandez has graciously agreed to take this task on and work with Mr. Tinch and his staff at the county meetings and so forth. This is a very non-exciting but extremely important endeavor, and so thank you, Councilmember Fernandez, for being willing to take that on. And the last thing is I want to give kudos to our favorite Public Works Director, Ray LeBlanc, and our city manager, Carlos Baia. If you notice, every time you come here, the building is looking better and better, and the work is progressing nicely. If you recall, for the public, we budgeted $40,000 to try to freshen this building up this year. $40,000 does not go very far when you start buying paint and tiles and things like that, so they're really doing a tremendous job. This is part of your council's effort to really make this city beautiful. I'm convinced that our city needs to be beautiful, and if we want it to be beautiful, we have to start with our city buildings and facilities. And so this building needs to be freshened up. As you can see, it's looking better all the time, and so I want to thank you guys for all the work that you've done on that so far, so. That's all I have. Any other new business or board reports? If not, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, along the lines of your last statement, just for the public particularly, so we are going to be moving forward to the next phase of actually demoing some of the woodwork that's out in the hallway and the floor tiles and things like that over the next several weeks. So just saying, pardon us for the appearance, we apologize for the inconvenience that we'll cause. We plan, thanks to the great leadership of Mr. LeBlanc, to do a lot of the sort of real heavy intensive work over the weekend, so as not to impact the public or the employees of the city. But we will be doing that over the next quite a few weeks, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. LeBlanc.
Yeah, next Tuesday is a particular date for inside and outside, so.
Yep. Yep. So you will start to see some significant changes. That's all I have.
That's all you have? Oh. City attorney?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Okay. Councilmembers, anything else? Directors? Public? We're all good.
Hi, public.
Okay, if there's no other business, we'll stand adjourned.